This is my badge.
Yeah.
Oh. Can Mike call roll?
Sure.
Thank, Mike call, can you please call roll?
Mrs. Krasinski?
Here, aye.
Here.
I'm all over the place.
The GoFundMe work is really messing you up.
Mrs. Grassi?
Here.
Mrs. Brewster?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I make a motion to approve the appointment of Belinda Grassi as Treasurer Pro Tempore. Can I get a second?
A second.
All right. Can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Krasinski?
Aye.
Mrs. Harden?
Aye.
Mrs. Grassi?
Aye.
Mrs. Brewster?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. So that brings us to our work session, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rotino.
Okay, we are excited, we have three presentations from three different firms to be an owners' rep for our CTE expansion. The first up is Cleora Management.
Can you place them particularly?
You can, wherever you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could come, it's still up here so we can't get you out of the film.
Oh, sure.
If you need to advance the slides.
Do you want to stand at the podium?
We can stand at the podium.
Is that preferable?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no microphone, but we can pretend.
Good evening, thank you very much for inviting us to come and present this evening. My name is Rick Freer and I represent Cleora Management LLC. We're happy to be able to present to Riverside Local School District.
Down button, I think is the next slide.
Thank you. One of the things that we feel is very important in considering how things move forward for Riverside to take into account Riverside Local Schools' strategic plan, in particular, you know, these four areas of focus. One of the things that I find interesting here is even the idea of fiscal sensibility, something that we feel very strongly about. Previous projects that we've done have sometimes been in districts that have fairly high tax rate. And so, as an example, City of Shaker Heights, seventy-two cents out of every dollar that somebody spends and taxes ends up going to underwrite the schools. So, that piece here, fiscal sensibility, is something that's really important for any district in order to serve the community. But equally, right, safety, climate, wellness, advocacy, partnerships, engagement, teaching and learning, all will play very important roles, and I think it's critical to look at any of the plans going through this prism. Here's a brief overview of our background and our story. Cleora Management stands for Cleveland, Ohio Real Asset Management. And among the team of people, we have more than a hundred years of combined commercial and institutional experience that we can leverage on behalf of our clients. For Shaker Heights City Schools, we did serve as owners' representative for a series of projects, approximately a forty-five million dollar investment, including fifteen million dollars for reconstruction of Friendly Elementary School and thirty million dollars of bond-related levy spending. In that process, we deeply evolved in community meetings leading up to the projects, as well as the analysis and the work that came through those meetings so that we could begin to shape projects accordingly. Helped with presentations to Board of Education and larger community. Partnered also with Van Akken-Aiken's Architects and Gil Bane Construction, which was the construction manager at risk on that project. Here you'll see a brief overview of one of the elements of planning and sequencing that we found to be very important for ensuring that we could finish a project on time and to avoid the risk of change orders. Change orders are something that are very detrimental to projects because it makes it much, much harder to control costs. So, there was a process that we went through, including one-hundred-and-fifty-point scope reviews for the subcontractors on the project, and I think it made a great deal of difference in terms of the outcomes. Next series of pictures you'll see are just going to be elements of some of the construction process. You can see that what we were dealing with here were, you know, older buildings, predominantly masonry, brick. Many of the structures that we've worked with are, you know, in the neighborhood of a hundred years old. Many of the elements that we had to address and work through were things that were not readily visible to the public, but were really important for an effective outcome. We did make a point of working with the architect to protect and integrate historic elements of Friendly Elementary School, where those could be renovated and brought back into use. And where it wasn't possible necessarily for us to do that, or where there was a different need that was realized, then we could begin the process of new construction. And so, these pictures will let you see some of the elements of that integration process. Here's a larger view of the building from a distance. Couple of things that I would point out here was a great deal of intentionality that was taken on the part of the architectural team, of the construction team, and, you know, our firm as the owners' representative to work at assessing things like color of brick, trying to maintain accuracy, trying to maintain historic proportions. Not every project requires that, but you can also see, you know, in these images where we're updating systems, you know, in this case putting in even things like sprinkler systems, which the building had not had previously, and finding ways also to improve the quality of insulation, upgrade the electrical infrastructure, and improve sound dampening between spaces. We were very intentional about that process. So, there are many challenges that come, you know, with protecting elements of the old while upgrading to the new. But it's a fun project and it's been something that would have stood out to be part of. Here you see elements of the new wing as they were coming together, including slate construction for the roof. And some elements that will give you some sense about what interior spaces looked like as the project was drawing to a close. Next few slides I'm going to share are, I think, interesting because this is partly what I think an owners' representative should be doing for a client, which is identifying deficiencies. So, you're responsible, among other things, for helping to hold your contractors accountable. Architects have a role to play, construction managers have a role to play. But who helps to ensure the quality of the outcomes? And that's where I think the owners' representative really is important. If you look at the quality of the finishes here around these penetrations, you'll see that the way that this was done by the subcontractor was not good. It would have allowed water infiltration, and it would have also allowed potentially even insect infiltration. So, this was one of those simple deficiencies that we identified but ended up being able to address. One of the things that's important is having eyes on site during construction projects, ideally finding problems while the construction itself is still taking place. And ideally, to avoid those problems even by ensuring that the quality of the contractors is really sound. Nonetheless, construction is a challenge, and the talent that's available in the construction industry has... You don't have the same degree of experience now, especially for some of the younger folks coming into the field. There is a need for more people with appropriate training. So, in a case like this, we were able to identify where there was actually water leaking from newly installed pipes, and we were able to identify that before the damage could become more severe, and we could correct it before the building had ever even opened. This isn't a very exciting image, it's simply a rooftop unit that you see that was mounted on the roof and put in place. But I share it because it has an interesting backstory. So, we always have to be in the process of controlling risk for our clients. And one of the things that you'll see is that the internal parts of this rooftop unit contain very sensitive electronic systems that are integral for the maintenance of the internal environment in the school. But you'll also notice in that right-hand picture, some spotting. That spotting looked a little peculiar, but what is it? It's effectively moisture that had been trapped inside the unit. So, when that was delivered to the rooftop and put in place, and I saw that, one of the things we did is we began a process of doing some research into why that was the case and what had happened. Come to understand that the unit itself had been manufactured in Texas, had been placed onto a freight car to go up to Minneapolis, Minnesota, where the facility was located where they were going to take the next phase of construction. They had built equipment into the unit and then put it into their storage yard, exterior. And it was outside for approximately six months. Now, we wouldn't necessarily have known that, but we were able to do the research, to go look at Google Maps, to be able to find where they were located and to see how they were storing them. In some cases, we could even see from the images that there were units that were stored outside that were uncovered. So, when we saw this, we realized that there had been water inside this unit, and that was going to be a problem. So, we presented the contractor with our findings. They acknowledged the fact that they had already pulled out and replaced the filters that were in the unit. But when we pointed out the fact that the electronics could be at risk as well, then that was something that they then were prepared to address. But if we hadn't raised this issue, it would have been something that would have slid by, might have gone beyond the warranty period, and the school district could have potentially gone on the hook for a very exten- very expensive and quite substantial expense. Here you see commercial-grade fire doors that were installed. Seems like a very small thing, but the scrape that you see there on the lower corner, it's identified by the arrows, and then element of manufacturing deficiency in terms of the sealant basically would mean that this would not pass fire code. And so, that is one of those things that could delay an opening. It also could potentially be hazardous in the event of an actual fire, you know, putting lives of children and teachers at risk. So, these are the kinds of things that, as an owners' representative, we're working to try and prevent and to be able to protect and to ensure that the projects can finish on time and with good quality. I love this image because it shows a beam that was signed by students and teachers as the school was getting underway and going to be rebuilt, gave them an opportunity to feel like what they were doing made, you know, had a small part to play in this and that they could come back and see this beam in place after the school had been constructed. We did receive an Award of Excellence from Cleveland Restoration Society following completion. I would point out that in this, I was very excited to find out about the two-and-a-half million dollar grant for days in technical education. And I think it's really a credit to Riverside Local Schools for pursuing that. And equally, as part of that process, to identify partners, because partnerships are the things that help to lead towards success. So, to have partners in advanced manufacturing, you know, healthcare and construction industries should help to there to be a much better outcome. Clearly was something that meant a lot when you filed for that grant application. But even more so, I think what's important is that you're positioning yourselves to be able to equip students for a much brighter future. I mean, the idea that in the grant proposal, that advanced manufacturing, that you could say that there are already twelve-hundred available jobs within twenty miles of Painesville, or that in healthcare, there's sixteen-hundred, or that in construction, that there are four-hundred jobs all waiting for people to come into them. These kinds of programs are really valuable. And so, from, on the one side of the perspective of an owners' representative, I can simply tell you that these kinds of programs and projects can be brought to completion and done well. And yet, I can also tell you that as a parent and somebody who is, has children growing up, you know, I see things like this and I'm very encouraged by it. I have a daughter who's pursuing her degree in nursing and this kind of a healthcare program. If, you know, it was something that was available to her, she would step into that. And equally, in advanced manufacturing, we have a background, working in the last several years, especially with regional manufacturers, helping them to mine and improve production processes, helping them to perform a five-S process for plant reorganization and to be able to optimize production facilities. So, this advanced manufacturing piece, there is truly a need for people with those skillsets and the training in the community. And so, again, it's really a credit to the district that this is something that you have pursued. Just simply would conclude by saying that we would welcome the opportunity to work with Riverside, believe very strongly in the vision of what it is that you're trying to accomplish, and would be happy to answer any questions if you may have.
What kind of lighting did you put throughout the school?
LEDs.
All LED, but I saw some circular lights. Did you do different types of lights in different rooms?
We did, and that was intentional on a couple of different levels. So, the lighting was designed on the one side to be, how shall I say, architectural, in part because architects like certain kinds of things. So, some of the round lighting that you saw in the library was visually interesting, but it also cast a very smooth, consistent, even light without being overly bright or harsh on the eyes. And so, this was something that we did spend time looking at and working with, even bringing teachers into the classroom spaces so that we could get their assessment of what was taking place there on the ground. I think it's very important to partner with the educators and the people who are working in the school district because they're the ones ultimately who are going to be dealing with whatever it is that you construct. So, you want to make sure that the quality of the construction and their experience working with it is sound.
Can you, can you expound a little bit on the backgrounds of the individuals that work with, for, with, for Cleora and some of the other projects that you've worked on that's not Shaker?
Sure. So, a partner in the enterprise is an individual by the name of Robert Baker. Robert Baker has a background working in owner representation. Among other things, he was involved with the two-hundred-million-dollar Franklin Circle construction project for Judson that's located outside of Champaign Falls. He also was intimately involved with work, and we actually collaborated on many of these projects for a series of schools in the city of Cleveland. Among them, breakthrough charter schools, including Citizens Academy Network, including the village prep and entrepreneurship prep schools. And then separately, with the intergenerational schools. And there actually were, at the time, three different intergenerational schools, two of which we helped to open, including the Lake Shore Intergenerational School and the Year Western Intergenerational School that grew in the entire city. You know, these projects were widely varied. In some cases, the buildings that we were working with had been owned by CMSD, Cleveland Metropolitan School District. In some cases, the buildings had been owned previously by the Diocese of Cleveland. And so, what we were doing was seeking to update them, improve internal infrastructure, ensure that there was compliance with code so that they were safe, you know, in terms of fire, and also improving other elements of it, lighting, security, among them. It was, you know, quite a complicated process. So, across the buildings that we were working on, it was probably eight different buildings and three-hundred thousand square feet of facility space, something along those lines. The other individual who you saw the material that was submitted is Frederick Freer. Frederick Freer III, he is the principal of an organization that performs inspections, now primarily commercial inspections. Historically, he had a background as a home inspector and actually transitioned from that into commercial and institutional inspection processes involving things like thermography and involving, in some cases, you know, highly technical analysis of issues, whether it's, you know, mold or lead or other forms of testing. And that's something that's a specialty of his. So, those are the people that work directly with the firm. We also have others who are available to work and who serves independent consultants to Cleora Management. And so, we have the ability to develop scale when we need to, and we can also be a smaller, tighter, more cohesive team on smaller projects.
Okay. I know you've built new buildings, you've had older buildings that you've, you know, brought up to code. And in this case, it's a new addition into an existing older building. What do you see as the challenges or whatever you want to call them?
There's always a challenge when you're integrating any kind of construction process into an existing building. It's just a matter of understanding what it is you're going to uncover. You sometimes will have issues pertaining to what I'll just call abatement risks, whether it's with asbestos or lead-based paint. But you also, you know, have challenges with understanding what the existing infrastructure looks like and what it can support. This is where I think it becomes really critical to have a good architect who's able to study and look at the plans. And then, as an owners' representative, we would basically serve at the right hand of that architectural firm. They would bring forward their findings, we would be reviewing those findings, we'd be providing the feedback on the findings. And understanding how that addition would actually impact the school in terms of its flow, the flow of traffic, the accessibility, not just in terms of, let's say, handicapped accessibility, but accessibility for the number, the appropriate number of people to come or go from the space at certain key times of the day. All of these kinds of elements of the process are things that we try and look at in this to make sure that the outcome on the other end is solid.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions, anything I can answer for you? No?
Good. We got to review your packet, so a lot of questions were answered there.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We have a little time until our next one is at 5:40. All right.
If he's ready.
If they're ready.
But you guys okay if they're ready, the next one? Absolutely.
Sure. Why not, right?
We're going to sit here in silence.
We're going to have a board game with the players.
Yeah. Some days, I don't know. Project Management Consultants is last.
You're giving your secrets.
Forget what we were just playing.
Project Management Consultants.
P and C. P and C. Oh, RPC is last.
Yes.
Sorry. Too many initials. Which class is that, Pete? So, these are our new badges? To get you access to?
Yeah, they are, they are ID badges, they, you can copy with them, that's kind of where you're at.
You can copy with thousands. All right, well, I just wanted... And so, we can copy nothing, it's just an ID.
It is to let people know that you are official, allowed to be here.
Okay.
Get in the building.
Sounds great. So, they won't do a background check if you come in? Right, I mean, especially if you go to some of the schools and you're sitting with other security people. So, you can... Explain the same thing, like, right, or refuse this. Whichever you want to do.
You can use either one, we gave you both either the belt or the linear or combined both.
Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, how are you two?
Good, how are you guys?
Good, thank you.
For camera purposes, I'd be...
That we are at the podium?
There's no microphone.
Yeah, that's okay, we don't, we're pretty loud. Would you like us to get started, or?
Sure, we're ready to go.
Perfect. Steve, hurry up a moment. Okay, wait a minute, just let you, one minute.
One minute?
Yes, yeah. We have like the end out to pass you.
If I don't, Eddie's out, I'll get in trouble after all the work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate you letting us start early, as you can see, we cover. First of all, my name is Steve Zinoni, I'm with Project Management Consultants, and I do want to thank the district for letting us come back, we really do appreciate this. Let me give you a little bit of background, P and C. We have been working with school districts across the state of Ohio since nineteen ninety-nine. I've been doing this for twenty-three years, I've worked with different districts. A lot of districts, you know, are in the OFCC program, but we work with districts who are in the ELP program, or if you're familiar with that, which I think you were part of originally, in the CFAB program. And we work with districts who've decided not to be in the program. And so, every, it's my belief that every district has a different need. So, we don't think that any, it's a cookie cutter kind of thing. You know, your district and your school students' needs are quite different from a different district. And so, we try to really, really do that. Our group has worked with some, of late, with some districts. One is a CFAB district, Warrensville Heights. Another is, which, there's some information on that, which was two new elementaries and a new middle-high school combined. We worked with Cleveland Heights, who was in the ELP program, and they did a new high school and two new middle schools. And the third is Beechwood Schools, we're working with them on their elementaries. They're not in the OFCC program. And we saw that, looking at your, your project, you have sort of two needs. You have that initial need in terms of the work, the money you receive from the Ohio Department of Education. You have a need to put on some more classrooms for career tech. We're very familiar with that, I've worked with the OFCC and worked with career tech, different career tech facilities, and have a great understanding of those needs. I think this is really great for your district and great for your students. We, we're going to talk about that a little bit later. I thought I'd give you just a little bit about how we work with districts and what's really important. What's really important is for us to really understand your community. And we'd like to, in any kind of decision that you make, in terms of your long-term decisions, that really involves community outreach and making sure that all voices are heard. And we put together a lot of programs with communities in terms of developing master plans. And these are the master plans at the OFCC, I have a very good relationship and worked with them. Worked with Bill Prentisol, who I think you've worked with in the past. But now, Bill has been replaced by Joey Duario, I've worked with him on a number of districts. But what's important is making sure the voice of the district is heard by the state if you determine you want to stay in the program. I mean, that's something that needs to be evaluated, and we can help you deter, determine that. What we'd like to do is bring, bring the community together, and that community includes not just residents, but includes parents, teachers, which are really critical, want to make sure that they're, they understand it, and students. And we use a lot of different pieces. We did something very similar in Beechwood, where we've worked with an architectural firm, TDA, who we helped them select, and we did a series of public meetings. But we didn't do them like the traditional way where everybody just sits and somebody lectures to them. We broke up the groups into small groups at tables, we asked them questions, got their information. It was a great way to get their, to get them to, to, community members to really work together as a, as a team and really hear every voice. We also use a lot of polling devices, which we, we find really helpful, where you use your phone, we even do word clouds. It's a great way to get those voices who aren't as loud to make sure they're, you hear them. At the same time, we really make an effort to go out in the community, we have to learn from your, who, who you think should be there. We have to learn from your, who you think should be there. And we will go out and we will call them or go to their meetings of their different community groups and make sure that they participate. And so I know that's sort of the long term. I know you've had some challenges. Beechwood was the same thing. They couldn't get their bond issue passed, but went through a whole different process. We've done that with a lot of, a lot of school districts. And also, I think personally, I think you should reevaluate, you know, where should you stay in the OFCC program? You know, I'm not saying you shouldn't or should, but what is in the best interest for you as a district? There, I've worked with districts where, yes, they may came up, come up and say you should build a new building, but maybe you want to save a building. Maybe you want to reuse different elements. There are ways to go back to them to still continue in the program or not. What I'd like to do is really pass it on to my two colleagues. One of the things I want to know, yes, we are a big group. We've worked with big projects, but we do small projects all the time. And you may not see all three of us on a small project. You'll probably see Doug and he'll be the last one to talk. But we, I thought it'd be good to kind of walk through what we do as we go through a project. And I'm going to first hand it off to Chris here. And Chris is just going to talk about sort of the design, how you go through the design piece. One of the things, though, that's very important, you have a very tight schedule for this first phase. And we believe that you should investigate, and we've done this with other districts, what is the right project delivery? And one of the elements we'd like to even look at is maybe design-build. I mean, it's a $4,000 on a big project, but it's a way to get, instead of having sort of the architect here and the contractor here and pointing fingers, maybe we bring them together to really make that. I believe, I believe it's spring of '26 is about this time for completion. So it's going to be a dash to the finish. Chris?
Okay, so good afternoon. I'm Chris Panigie, and I'm also a project consultant. Before I get into the planning and design pieces, the little bio, I mean, some of you may have heard it. So about 30 years in the profession. First 20 years were actually in practice, where I focused on educational architecture, both higher education and K-12. I've worked in several districts. But the last 10 years, I might have been on the owner's side. So I was the director of planning, designing, construction at University Architect at Case Western Reserve University. So I know what it's like to be an owner. I understand the stewardship involved in it. Here's the budgets, managing faculty and expectations is very important. So I really understand that role. And I know PMC too as well. Doug and I worked together years ago in practice and I've known Steve as a colleague for years. And of course, Jeff, they were our legal counsel. So I'm new to PMC, but I'm not, it's not new to me. So I just wanted to let people know that and hear that. So planning and design phase, Steve already talked about a little bit of it, but the first thing you do is you want to develop a project plan, right? No matter how big the project is. I worked on all kinds of projects at Case. Some of them were, you know, $150 million down to $50,000. And some of those $50,000 ones were, you know, very important, especially if the C-suite was one of their pet projects. So I get it. So, you know, we can work in all different sized projects. And during that phase, as project planner, you really determine the quality, the schedule and the budget, right? And it's all go-in-hand, those three, three-legged stool. You always hear that. You've heard that terminology before, but it's important. If you set it right in the beginning, have a good project plan, then as it executes, you know, you constantly affirm that and you just keep going on it. But it's important to plan from the beginning. You also select the project delivery. Steve talked about maybe the smaller ones, design build is a good option. CMC or CMR is an option too. That's construction manager at risk. You've heard that, but it's called construction manager as constructor. That's the, you know, the new terminology, a little softer. And then there's designed to build, which is the traditional method. Depending on your schedule, I know you want to go live here in the spring of '26, so you might want to consider a different delivery method. Maybe design build is the right approach. So that's one piece. Team building. Team building is very important. So where we would help you out with in the beginning is sending out the RFPs, RFQs for the architect or contractor or design builder, one of the same. And it's important really to develop that team relationship. Partnering is one of the big things our firm does. Steve does an awesome job at it. He's kind of like, I call him, he's like an architectural construction therapist. No, it's really important to understand you have a strong team, both on the owner's side and on the consultants that are working for you. So the actual planning process, you're going to meet, you know, depending on the size of the project, you're still going to have the stakeholder meetings, right? You're going to have the educational visioning, engagement sessions with faculty, staff, you know, outreach, public outreach, whether or not they're your partners, they're going to work on it. I think you guys are looking at Gem Construction and Dawson Homes as being a strategic partner, you know, what I read in some of the literature that you guys provided. You know, it's important for these type of Excel tech spaces to have those strategic partners because they're informing you what's going on in today's built, you know, environment. Their current trends and, you know, these are, these students are going to be moving up, maybe into colleges in the future or maybe not. And so it's important to have that perspective. You also develop during this phase, the program and the pedagogy, how you want to teach on a much bigger scale. This one's a little smaller, but when you look at something, a larger facility, it's important to get that right and understand what's good for Riverside, right? You establish aesthetic goals, you know, like traditional, contemporary. This is a very traditional district, I can see by some of your earlier projects. And you want to make sure you maintain that and make sure that's right for Riverside. And then manage the expectations. That was a big one. Again, always something that's very important to understand. You have to have buy-in, get the transparency. You want to make sure that people know, not everything is gonna, you're not going to get everything. Budgets aren't limitless. And so you have to make sometimes those decisions that are good for the district. But it's important to make sure that there's buy-in and transparency and people know why you made those decisions. And then the actual design process itself, just quickly, the three major stages. We have SD, MD, design, design development, instruction documents. All during those times, there'll be costing efforts. Even in design build situation, you're going to have maybe SD and DD can get more compressed, but you're still going to be costing along the way and then doing reviews. So I have reviews with, depending on how it goes, right? You have reviews with the RPC, the regional planning consultant for the state. So you're going to have all that oversight and just want to, you know, we are here, we're stewards and we're facilitators and we're extension of your staff and we work for you.
Doug Myers. I am also an architect. Unlike Chris, I left the practice a little earlier in my career. I practiced for about 10 years in small and large firms and decided that I wanted to get on the owner's side. So I went over to CSU, I was a staff architect there. Then I went over to Tri-C and I became a director of project management, director of design and construction. While I was there, we had a master plan that we executed. It was over $200 million. It was like six different buildings. So we had to change our group. So at that time, I focused more on the awards and the construction aspect. And we hired another colleague of mine that focused on the design. So I really tried to build my career as an owner, an architect and a construction manager so that we can kind of understand and be able to help projects. When we're helping projects, there's different levels of sophistication for clients that we work with, but they all have full-time jobs. And an investment, whether it's a small investment or a large investment, takes a lot of time, takes a lot of energy and you want to have eyes on it. So our role is really to assist, as Steve and Chris were saying, to help keep eyes on it as you build the team and you have a lot of different people on. We have a good understanding. We've been in those seats to understand, okay, what should the architect be doing right about now? What should the contractor be doing? Is this happening? But even as important as that, the owner's needs. You know, sometimes architects try to manage projects, sometimes construction managers try to manage projects. But once you've been an owner, as Chris started to say, you care about when that class, when it's time for class, you want to have the ability to put students in those seats and you want to have the instruction material all ready. You don't want to be working on, you need to be ready to go. You can't be messing around with keys and locks and all that. So when we're putting together a project, we're trying to be mindful of those. And it's one of the reasons why I wanted to be an owner, so that as I developed my career, I could have those understandings. You know, and you get into move management, I know you guys have done two new elementary schools, so we're not telling you anything you don't know. We understand that. I did want to mention while I was at Tri-C, as far as your grant that you have now, you know, we did projects of very similar scope for those. It's important at a college level. You can see it's important at a high school level. So we have some familiarity, you know, with advanced manufacturing, with construction and with health care programs. So that is something we can definitely help with. I went over to PMC and since I've been there almost eight years, I've been helping manage school projects, Cleveland Heights, University Heights, Warrensville. We did a new elementary school. They had a two-segment program. It was with OFCC. So we've worked with OFCC and we've also worked independently, as Steve had mentioned. They had a six through 12 single complex that we did that was pretty interesting, pretty challenging during COVID, as I know you guys are aware. And then currently working with Beechwood on their project. So as we've kind of been developing our careers, we have in front of you lists of 11 key factors, whether it's a small project or a large project, the process is kind of the same. You know, your teams might be smaller, your schedules might be faster, but as far as the communication, the, all the roles that are involved and everything else, they're pretty similar. For my part tonight to talk about construction, I did want to just kind of follow up with Chris. You guys, in your RFQ, you were right on what's the quality, what's the schedule, what's the budget? Those are the, those are the key ingredients, right? So when we get into construction, the way we watch quality is the contracts have checks and balances in them. So we really maintain that we're watching those and that different parties are doing their job. So an example of that is through the design process, we're going to be specifying materials, products that are going to be acceptable. So when we get into construction, the contractor, construction manager, they're going to put together shop drawings. And then we're going to have the architect check to make sure that they are buying and installing in the project what was designed. So that's, that's one level of quality control. We also have throughout the construction process, we'll have, we'll be walking the construction site. The architects and engineers have a responsibility to check the construction. So we'll walk with them and make sure that they're preparing their field reports. So as it's being constructed, we have the appropriate members that aren't the builders, they're actually the ones that prepared the construction documents, watching it to make sure that the construction quality is going. And even with all of that, I don't know about you, but the last couple of years, the quality of construction has not seemed to be what it was pre-pandemic, whether it's the workforce, whether it's the skill of the workforce, whether it's the products that are being manufactured. But it's, it's right to be concerned about it. You know, we're finishing up a project, we're seeing some items. So one of the most important things is to make sure that the construction manager's superintendent is a bulldog, making sure that they're watching their trades. So if it's the plumber installing the toilets, make sure that they're overseeing, make sure that that is happening and that you don't have a trade that's taking shortcuts, that's going to get hidden, that you're not going to find out for five or six years and it's something. So you're not going to catch everything, but those are some of the things that we do to try to keep an eye on quality. As far as budget, when we put together a project plan, we put together a detailed project budget so that we have, we try to put all the owner costs that we have in there. We try to identify hard costs and soft costs. So you have construction costs, you have professional costs, okay? But the key is having contingencies. So really to manage a budget, depending on the risk of the project, we want to have appropriate contingencies built in. Those are to cover the items that are going to come up. We know they're going to come up. We just don't know which items are going to come up, right? So you can't go in so tight that you are hoping for a perfect project because it doesn't exist, right? So as we manage, we have projects that'll have, maybe it's fast-tracked, maybe you have certain awards, but we take the executed agreements, we add those to the current estimates, and that's what our projected cost is. And then we're going to go ahead and we manage our projected costs below the project funding, okay? And then we isolate the hard cost contingencies and the soft cost contingencies. And those are really the two key numbers. So once all your awards are made, you're managing those two contingencies. As long as you stay within your budget for those contingencies, you're good because you know you're below, you're below the funding, okay? So that comes into change management. And we, we work with the architects, the construction managers. We watch when changes come up. We anticipate when we, when we think something's coming up, we try to put it on the budget sheet as a forecasted cost. Once we have a bulletin and we get a cost from it, we put it as a pending cost, we decide whether it's going to become a change order or not. If it's a change order, it gets executed. So at any time during the project, we understand, we can add up our forecasted, our pending and our executed, and we can know where we are in spending our contingencies. So say you hit something right at the beginning of the project and you're eating up half or three-quarters of your contingency. We know early in the project, we need to make some adjustments. We're not waiting to the end, okay? I think that's really key in managing the project budget. The last item was schedule. And when we have, same thing with the project plan, crucial to any successful project, you have to put together a realistic schedule, okay? It has to meet your needs, but you have to have consultants that are willing to tell you, hey, this is where the challenges are. It can't just be, yes, people, because that doesn't do you any good if you're not successful. So we need to put together an overall plan, what the schedule is as we design the project. And then as we, whatever the delivery method is, whoever the builder is, they're going to give a schedule before we order a contract, right? So once they put together a contract, they're going to have a schedule where make sure that that meets it. So then when you get into construction, it's really executing the plan, right? So we watch the schedule during construction a couple of different ways. We're going to go ahead, we'll have construction meetings, we'll have the contractor put together a two- or three-week look ahead. So they'll put together the details. We have the overall schedule, but then they're going to show us the next two weeks, next three weeks, these are the trades, this is what's going to happen, right? We tell them, you have to tell us this. And then we walk the site with them and the architect and we can see right away, is it getting done? Is it not getting done? So that's one way we can manage the schedule. We also, we review payoffs so we can check with the payoffs. It's not a straight line, but you can kind of anticipate, if you're halfway through the project, you probably should have been spending about half of your, half of your money. So if we realize we're halfway through the project and we've only spent 10% of our labor, we might have a schedule issue, you know? So that's another way to kind of check it. And then also with the schedule, we, we look at, a key thing is leadership and decision-making. So as owners, what we try to do is when there's an issue that comes up in the project management level that needs direction, we try to get it straight to the, to the key stakeholders that are decision-makers, make a recommendation and give that direction to the team so that they can keep the whole project going. So with that being said, I'm going to go back over.
Let me ask you a question. On the change orders, I know people that have made most of their profits from change orders, okay? And so how do you control the cost of a change order? Because if you don't trust the person who's doing the work, you can really be taken advantage of.
Absolutely right. And so what we do is we review with the architects and engineers and we review with the contractor that's providing it. And we have them give us the backup so that we can look at it and we can see what crew are they using? How long are they using? What material are they using? And we, we kind of have enough experience to be able to understand, yeah, you should be able to do that in half the amount of time, you know? Or if we find out that sometimes...
So you then negotiate with them? Because if they give a hard number...
Oh, we negotiate. Oh, gosh, yes.
Because if they give a hard number and you move, you have to pay them.
Let me tell you two, another thing that we also do, which I think makes us unique. When we're in negotiation of the contract, let's say it's a guaranteed maximum price. I don't know if you've all heard of that. Well, we don't make, we don't allow the construction manager or the design builder to determine what that GMP is all alone. We do a facilitated session. I do these all across the state. I probably do two a week. I just did one this morning for Bowling Green State University. And the purpose of that is first of all, identify what's not in there. What are they going to come back to us with? And so we minimize this, we make sure everybody's expectations.
What we do is we bring the AET. We bring you as an owner, owner's rep and the construction manager. And we go through a document that's about 70 pages. We just go line by line by line.
Right, because often architect will do a cookie cutter
Yes.
and they leave stuff out.
Out.
And you're responsible for it as the owner or even the contractor.
Yes.
So you're covering that base because you're going, look, you left this out, this out. We need to price it in. So we have an accurate number.
That's exactly right. And that is really one of the key things that we've been very successful. We actually introduced that, I know some of you met Jeff Applebaum, who is a lawyer. He was the one who did a project delivery for the state of Ohio and incorporated facilitated GMPs. And that's a requirement to do that. Now, I will tell you, some of your colleagues in other districts are not following the rules. They're not doing those things, which are really good. There's huge benefit by facilitating the GMP.
It flushes us. There's a couple of tools you can use.
Well, let me ask you, in the not following the rules, do you think they do it intentionally or they don't know?
They don't know.
Exactly.
They don't know.
So when you don't know...
That's right.
And that's why you have to fill the gaps.
We're here to help you to make sure you know.
Is the purpose behind it to minimize your change orders from the get-go?
Yes, it is.
Uncovered the unknowns.
Yeah, unknowns.
Known unknowns.
No surprises.
Yes.
Yeah.
Try it as much as possible.
And it is amazing what we come up. And oftentimes, we identify that there's doubling of numbers. There, we've, I did this even today at Bowling Green. It's a public job, so I can talk about it. It's at Bowling Green, we found out that it was a design build that they had doubled up. And it wasn't intentional, but it was a mistake. We saw that they had design services twice in two different locations and we were able to get that. Well, then we were able to get the GMP down. Also, it's because we tell, I will say this, we are very open and honest. We tell them, this is the number you've got to get to. We don't hide it, but we want to make sure everything's in there and so we do that. What Doug's talking about is when we do get hit, we really run them through their paces.
Right.
We've also, at times where we've run into a deadlock, we've authorized them to do a not to exceed and we kept track of the time. So then we have them prepare tickets and the daily logs will show how many people are on the project, what they're doing. And so we'll watch, we'll watch those because it does happen. It does happen. Right. Now, one of the tools that I mentioned, there's also unit costs. So upfront, say you're doing a lot of flat work, a lot of concrete work, and you knew it was part of the process. So we have identified these unit costs upfront. So if there is, hey, I want to do a little more concrete, we realize something, you already have costs in there. It's pre-negotiated at bidding. So it's not a post-bidding number.
Right.
Done that effectively at the university and several things. So it's kind of like a, it's a way to keep them honest. Yeah?
As you can see, we're pretty enthusiastic. We'd like to work with you to be very honest. We like working with districts. We have the ability to go small with small projects, but we think we have some tools that might be of help to you if you continue on in terms of analyzing your big project for your facilities. And we have a good relationship with the OFCC. We are, I will say this, we represent you as a district, even though we have a good reputation. I believe there are ways to work with them that you can, or you might make a decision that you don't want to work with them. And we can help you make that decision in a clear cut way. What are the pros? What are the cons?
So if you had 10 projects, what is it, what percent would be beneficial going OFCC and what percent would be not?
It really comes down to what your two pieces, what your share is. When we worked with Beechwood, they determined, we get so little money from them, but they put so many rules and requirements on us.
Right.
Like, we don't like the side. We want to go to a smaller classroom. So when you get to that piece, I worked at Palmer's Schools. There, it really came down to air conditioning. They didn't want to air condition. And the cost of air conditioning was greater than the cost of their, what they were getting from the state. So they made that decision. Now, as I said, every district's different. We would want to find out what's important to you. And also, there has been situations, this Shaker Schools just recently did, they originally, OFCC wanted to build a new high school. They didn't want to do that. So they determined, we're not going to build one. Now, they got a little less money because the building's bigger than, you know, they get all these square footage. Oh, it was square footage, but that's money. Please, let me open it to questions.
How would you ramp this into our facility assessment that we've had done?
I would, first of all...
In a minute or less, I'm sorry.
First of all, we, one, we'd review it. We would analyze it and then we would say, we would also want to find out, what have you done between the point in time when you had that assessment? And what have you done to the building since? Because you may have upgraded the building, you may have replaced things. And we would go through that and help determine what it really means.
Yeah, we also bring in costing experts too. Very important to have those cost numbers because that's going to form your decision making. Can't make a decision unless you know the cost. That's step number one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure. Wish we had more time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
At least they mentioned you were all around. No, he wasn't here. David, he was not able to come. And they...
So I have a question. So they're mentioning that Ohio Facilities Construction.
Construction.
Yeah. So how involved are we? I don't know. Are we involved with them?
Not with this project.
Our first two buildings, we engaged with them. We closed those out.
Okay. That's what Gary's finishing with them.
We are finishing closing those two out. We do have a plan. Our whole plan is on file with them. It is still, our money's not up. We're not in our place to make that for that. And we don't know when that's going to be done.
Okay. But this is a smaller project, so no.
This project has nothing to do with that. There's a design manual where they come in and kind of make recommendations. We've had it done a couple of times. But we are not, in terms of this, we're not engaging with them.
Okay.
Like if we decided to go forward and build a new school, we could decide to use OFCC rules or not and get money credited back later. I don't know, we have...
Okay.
When our time does come, then we can get money credited back for what we had spent.
Okay.
Ahead of time for that.
I just wanted to understand the math.
Certain percentage, right? Like...
I think we're 90/10. Is there 90/10 locals and 10% local sharing?
So obviously, we've talked about tying in some projects with this, you know, because you're there, you know, whatever. But I guess that would be part of the responsibility is helping us through that process.
It would be. My understanding, and I'm not an expert on this, but if we go with the design build, we have less control. Whereas if we have a construction management at risk or whatever the new term is, we may have some more control in terms of what we can bid out and design in. But the design build is more of a, kind of here's the general parameters and then go...
You design it and then build it.
Yeah, you design it and build it from that standpoint. So it wouldn't necessarily be adding the alternates to tie somebody another options in. It does have its benefits where it is faster and more expedited. But they also, it's one that we've kind of had some of those questions with all these firms about what's the best route. It's about split.
Okay.
They have experience with both.
Both methods, right? Like, I think they've also, that they would work with whatever.
Yeah. They've worked with what we wanted, but they would also sit down and help us choose based on what we needed and based on the reports.
Okay.
And the people coming now, if you ask that question, they might say that with this project attaching into a building that design build might cause you more problems. It's, yeah, they might say that, so.
Right.
That's what they said before, so.
Yeah. Anytime. I mean, new construction is one thing, but when you are doing new to old, wow, yeah.
We did, we had more time, I think, to ask those questions when we were in Buildings and Grounds.
Okay.
I don't know how much time we're giving here, half an hour?
It's a half hour.
Yeah. So...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because you already have some prior discussions.
Well, you can ask the question. I mean, you can interrupt them and just ask them while they're talking.
Yeah.
I mean, they want to answer questions, so.
Right, they're going through their...
In terms of recent local, PMC is in charge of the JL Lake County correctional. So that's...
The one? Yes.
The one that hasn't been drawn up yet. They've had some real challenges.
They're, they have experience navigating some of those challenges.
Yeah, so those are the two that...
Well, what I'm saying is...
When I got references.
The commissioners have not yet gotten to the point where they're putting forth a plan. Let's just put it that way. Yeah.
And they all have their...
And there's still, one of the sticking points there is they're still looking for some state money. And so, you know, that's...
That's a sticking point at the end.
Well, it's a question mark, how much are you going to get?
Yeah.
So I think they were looking at 10 million before, but now they're looking at 20?
Yeah.
It's going to be really early. It's going to have like superstitious time.
It's a half hour.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Silence this thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh.
All right, are you start?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. I'm Roger Riashy with RFC Contracting. With us tonight is Ryan Nemec and Joe Gates, both with RFC Contracting. Thank you for the opportunity. We're excited to be here. We're excited that we made the cut. We must have told you good things on Monday, right? So real quick, we'll talk about RFC a little bit. Then we want to get into some similar projects, similar to yours, and get into your project as well. So RFC Contracting was founded in 1995. When we started, we started as a general contractor. Did a lot of hard bidding back then. And then as the state of Ohio evolved in the delivery construction methods, we evolved with the state. So we went from the hard bidding to the owner's rep, to the construction manager at risk, to the design build and everything in between of those models. We have delivered a project one way or another throughout the, with one of those different models of construction delivery methods. So that's kind of, we covered the gamut. We're a medium sized company. We're not a company that's going to go after every single project. We target our, the projects that we go after. We do a lot of public work. I would say probably 80% of our volume is public. 20% of our volume is private. And we're excited to be here and to be submitting on yours. I don't know who's controlling the...
Is it this room?
Oh, okay.
You guys.
I have a little bit.
Down by instruction.
Here we go. So for this particular project, you know, Ryan and I will be the front people on the project. We have our office support staff that will be helping us. Joe being one of them. Joe will be more of a project engineer on the project. Help us with reviewing some of the submittals, the, you know, updating schedules, working on schedules. And obviously, we'll have a superintendent that will also be involved with the weekly visits to the project site. The reason we don't have a superintendent picked yet because we're not sure of the timing of the project and we're not sure exactly what we're looking for. The way we pick our superintendents is we match them to the project. So basically, if it's something that's more of a remodeling project, we'll have somebody with more carpentry interiors background. If it's a ground zub, we'll have somebody with more structural, earthwork, concrete, nasonry, steel, that kind of background on it. So when we get into understanding more about your project and the timeframe of it, we'll select the superintendent at that moment. So our experience as an owner's rep is pretty wide in the public sector. We've done schools, we've done fire stations, we've done police stations, we've done some township work, a lot of library work. And, you know, we have them all listed here. It's in the handoff that you have as well. I would like to touch base on a couple of them because they're similar to your project. They're, the projects that you have there are projects that either the master assessment plan was put together and done on those projects already. And then we stepped in as an owner's rep and helped the, helped the owner select a design team, review the master assessment plan, create some options for them through the master assessment plan, take it into a design phase. And then from the design phase, take it into the bidding and construction phase. Some of them were very similar to yours. Like I said, the master plan was already done. Some, we worked with the owner on selecting a firm to perform the master plan, such as, you know, Byalovsky Architects. such as, you know, Byalovsky Architects, and then, kind of go through the, the process of everything else that goes, that goes along with the, with the process. One, one project comes to mind a little bit is Euclid Public Library. We're in the design phase right now, oddly enough, with Byalovsky. They're the, they're the architect that we selected to do the assessment of the building. And what we did there is we, the library wanted to look at potentially leaving the existing building where it sat and remodeling it, or maybe tearing down, or maybe look at different locations. So, we went through, through the plan, we, we looked at different options. And at the end of the day, when we, when we finalized the, the assessment plan, we came back and we gave them option of staying where, where the building is at, remodeling it, tearing down the building and building new, selecting another, a new site, and selecting a smaller building on another site, and keeping the building that, that is there there. We went, we went through the, the gamut of the numbers, the costs, the pros, the cons, which would be something similar to what we would work with, with you on for, for your projects. They decided to stay where, where they're at. They wanted to remodel the building. A lot of it was driven by dollars and cents. And that's what we're doing now. We're in a, we're in a design phase right now with Byalovsky designing the, the building. We're also, our role as an owner's rep goes beyond just, you know, what we have listed. In particular, for instance, with Euclid, I'm helping, helping them negotiate a temporary location, because they don't wanna completely shut down the library during the construction. They will still wanna offer services to their patrons. So, I'm working with them on, on a, on a location, negotiating with the real estate agency, and trying to hopefully come to, come to terms on something for the duration of the project for them to be in that, in that location. In a temporary location. So. Strongsville Schools is, is a project where they had, it wasn't really as much as a, as an assessment plan as they knew that they were gonna remodel the high school and tear down the middle school and build new. So, we got a new going into the project, what we needed to do. Which is a little bit similar, because you, you know that you wanna add, you wanna build, you know, use the, the money that you got from the grant, and you wanna build the career tech. So, you have part of it, you've already decided. What you wanna do is the question of how you go about, about doing it. So, there are some similarities there with Strongsville. We work with the design team, we work with the, with the board and administration on helping, you know, with the, with the estimate, with the, with the constructability review of the, of the drawings, putting the phasing together, putting the schedule together. And through our efforts as an owner's rep, we ended up saving them almost close to $2 million that they ended up using on other projects throughout the, throughout the district after we were completed with the, with the middle school and the, and the high school project. So, that's some of the things that, as, as an owner's rep, that we would, we would offer as well. By the way, if you have any questions through this, don't hesitate to, to jump. We don't wanna have to wait till the end. We like to interact, it's fine. So, if you have any questions at any point in time, feel free to jump in. I know we're a little bit short on time, but. So, now, your project. It's our understanding that the approximate overall for now, the money that you have now is about $5 million is, is kind of what we were told. Your priorities are the new career tech education space, and then, touching some of the elementary schools, Buckeye, Matridge, the Muth Middle School, and then, the Riverside Campus. So, obviously, you have a very extensive master assessment plan that's in place with a lot of information in it. But talking about the career tech education space for a second, it's our understanding that that's gonna be right around $2.5 million. You do have a grant for it. And it's my understanding, the grant will, you'll have to do the project and be done by spring of 2026, if I'm not mistaken with, with the dates. So, since we got that information, on Monday, we took the liberty to put a little schedule for you for that project to see what it, what it would look like. And.
In your guys' packet, there is a little Gantt chart.
Okay. So, we.
It outlines the program and schedule we put together.
So, I'll, I'll go over the, the schedule quick. If you flip one more page, the Gantt chart is right there. So, basically, we assume from the information you provided that you're gonna have an owner's rep onboard in May 2024. We feel that by August of 2024, we can help, if, if we're the selected owner's rep, we can help to find a design firm, whether, whether you do it on a design, on a design basis or a design build, whatever you choose, we can work with either, either concepts, you know, with you. So, we feel by August 2024, we can have that, that design firm or a design build firm onboard. We'll start design in, in September of 2024. We feel by May 2025, we'll have ample time to have, to bid the project and have permits ready and start construction. And no longer than February 2026, we, we should have your, your building ready for you. So, based on the schedule that we put together, you have ample time to get this thing done before spring of 2026, because we understand that that's the timeframe restraints as far as the, the grant is, is concerned. So, that's kind of what we would, what we would, I guess, suggest or propose to you for the, for the career tech educational space. Now, as that project is ongoing, obviously, you wanna look at the rest of your master assessment plan, take a look at some of the dollars and cents that you have available, and figuring out how, what you wanna do with that, and what you wanna add to that project or as a separate project at the same time or later time. These are all discussions that we will have with you, and we would like to have your input on before, before any, any suggestions or any options or any decisions are made. But our approach to it would be, there's nothing stopping us that as the career center, the career tech educational space is moving forward, we can be working in parallel on some of these other items and some of these other projects that you wanna work on and either add them throughout the, the design process itself or at a later date, or bid them as addendums or optimants, or whatever, whatever you, you pretty much choose, however you choose to do it. We would obviously need a little bit more input from, you know, the board and the administration for us to be able to give you options or, or.
So, not everyone was here at our last meeting. So, could you explain the difference, in your opinion, on this project, between a design build or other?
Sure. So, so the design build would, would be where you would have to create criterias for the design build firm to submit, you know, for the project. So, that, those criterias are put together, you'd have to have some kind of list of items, maybe a schematic design, and then, you would, you would submit that to the design build firm. Your design, your design build firms would submit with response to, to your RFQ. And then, you know, you do the same process you're doing with, with us now, but with a more, more or less with a design build firm. The other option would be to do the typical where you, you do an RFQ for a design firm. You hire them, it'll be an architect, you bring them onboard, you work with them on the design, and then, you either hire a construction manager at risk to build, to build the building, and/or you wait till the project is fully designed, and you can bid it as a hard bid, you know, general contractor lump sum bid.
So, if you were, if you were, if you were dictating how it would go, how would it go?
Well, first of all, I'll never dictate anything to you. I'll give you options.
If you were the guy, and you said, okay, this is how I recommend it goes, which way, which way would you prefer?
We, we give, I always give you options, you make the decisions, we take your decision and implement it. But personally, what I would, from, again, from the little bit of information that I have, I would recommend going with a design firm, not a design build. And the reason being is, I think it's gonna give you more flexibility. You, you know, you're, you're building this, this career tech in, in, on an existing building. So, you have, we have a lot of unknowns, we don't know what we're gonna run into. We really need, you, in my opinion, you cannot clearly define the criterias to select a design firm and for them, a design build firm, and for them to move forward with, with the project in this short of a time. So, my recommendation, again, just from the information we have so far, would be to select a design firm, work with them on what is it that you, how you want this building to look, what you want in it, go through that process, and then, either go a CMR route, construction manager at risk, or go with a, with a hard bid GC, you know, once the design is, is completed. But again, we will, from our perspective, we've done it both ways, we can do it both ways. Our role as an owner's rep in general is to help you make decisions and help guide you and give you options. You know, as, as, you know, we joked about it, but that, that is, that is a reality. We don't, we were, we're never gonna come to you and say, this is the only way it can, it can be done, you have to, you have to do it this way. We're gonna give you all the options, we're gonna give you the pros and cons on it, we're gonna let you make the decision. Whatever decision you make, we'll take it, we'll implement it. That's just the way we, you know, we operate. So, and, and again, you know, we'll, we, sometimes, so, construction is, the construction process never goes smoothly. If somebody tells you, oh, you're not gonna have a problem with us? Well, I'll tell you, run the other way. But it's all about how you approach it. So, when we have issues, we're gonna come to you and we're gonna give you options. Sometimes, unfortunately, there is only one option to resolve a problem, right? More often than not, we're gonna have multiple options. We're gonna give you the different options, we're gonna tell you what you're looking for, what you're looking at, we're gonna give you our recommendation, our opinion. Hopefully, we'll have dollars and cents to tie into it, because unfortunately, that, a lot of time, that drives the decision. And then, we're gonna, we're gonna answer any questions that you have, and we're gonna let you make that decision. Once you make that decision, you decide on which route you wanna go, we'll just take that and implement it. That's pretty much our role in general, you know, big picture, as, as your, as your owner's rep.
How do you handle the, the change orders and/or the possibility, well, you know you're gonna have some change orders. So, how do you, how do you control the cost?
Well, that's, that's a great question. So, because we are also a general contractor and a construction manager at risk, and owner's rep is not the only thing we do, we have access to all the suppliers in town, whoever is gonna build a building for you, if we're your owner's rep, we have access to the same suppliers that they have access to. So, if a change order is to come up, our, what, the way we handle it is, we're gonna do our own takeoffs on the materials. We're gonna call the suppliers in town, we're gonna say, this is the product, how much is it gonna cost? I'm gonna have the same quotes they have. So, if they send us an inflated quotes, we're gonna call them on it. We're gonna know what the, what the material cost is, we're gonna know that the contract is gonna dictate what they can market up, so that's easy. And then, on the labor side, we're gonna, we're gonna review it from that perspective as well, because that's what we do, we, we do these estimates, we, we do it on other projects. We're not owner's rep on all the projects that we do. So, that's the advantage of having an owner's rep firm that also is a contractor and has done hard bid, general contracting, and/or construction management at risk. So, we're gonna, we'll review it, and then, if the numbers are submitted, we feel is a fair number, we'll come back to you and say, we feel it's a fair number. It's not, I'm gonna go back and forth with them as long as I need to, to get back to the point of being, feeling that the number is fair and recommending it to you. It doesn't mean that our review is, is always gonna be right. They might have, they might look at it in a different way than, than we look at it, but that's part of the dialogue. But the way we're gonna do it is, we're gonna do our own estimates, our own numbers, our own takeoffs. And that's how we're gonna challenge the numbers. We're not just gonna challenge them for the sake of challenging them, we're gonna have hard costs and hard, you know, labor figure to share. This is prevailing wage work. So, the labor is pretty much dictated by the prevailing wage rates. It's not like they can say, well, yeah, the prevailing wage is X amount an hour, an hour, but we're paying, we're paying them this much. Well, we're gonna know from their prevailing wage reports what they're paying.
Well, that, but, you know, as you well know, some of the inflation is, they'll add in three more hours that wasn't there.
And, and that's our role as your owner's rep of not letting that happen. And again, because we, we have done it as a contractor, we have that experience, we have that knowledge of what it takes to do demolition, to build the wall, to do the electrical, to do the mechanical, I mean, we, we do this every day.
So, what is your approach to try to reduce the number of change orders?
Our approach to it is the constructability review. So, when we, when we're gonna work with your design team and we're gonna look at those drawings, we're gonna review the drawings before we release them out for bid. And we're gonna make sure, again, we're gonna put our contractor's hat on, and we're gonna look at it. Unfortunately, architects, a lot of times, have the tendency to draw something that looks great, but that cannot be built, right? So, we're gonna, we're gonna balance that out. We're gonna make sure that when we're doing our constructability review, we're reviewing all these items. We're gonna look at what makes sense, what doesn't. We're gonna spend as much time as we can in your building where the addition is gonna go to make sure that, okay, this wall is gonna come down, what's above the ceiling here? What, you know, this is, these are the things we're gonna anticipate. What are we gonna run into? Do we have electrical, do we have plumbing, do we have mechanical? This is typically where the change orders happen. It's either an existing condition that they didn't account for, or a design detail that the architect came up with that truthfully cannot be, cannot be built, you know? So, we're gonna, we're gonna go through those, and we're gonna work with the design team throughout the constructability review phase of it, and, and have these discussions with them. And hopefully, that result in a, into a set of documents that, that will eliminate a lot of the, a lot of the change orders.
Yeah, 'cause what they have brought up before is, the architect isn't always giving you something. You have to, you have to almost cause them to make the decisions before, the changes before you start. And, and when the architect draws something and something's not in there that needs, needs done, it's an automatic change order if you don't catch it upfront.
That's. We, we have learned over the years to interpret the intent of the architect. We've done that very, very well now. And in a, the, the discrepancies always happen with architect, with design teams, where it's like, well, this was my intent. Okay, well, your intent isn't what you showed on the document. This is where the back and forth. So, this is why when we're doing our constructability review, we're gonna bring up all these things. We're gonna say, okay, how, how do you, what are you, what are you trying to accomplish here? You know, what, what you have is, looks great, but it can't be built. Let's find a detail that, that, that they're gonna be able to work with. And that's all gonna be part of our constructability review. So. We're familiar with Lake County, we just finished the Concord Fire, Tonsia Fire Station as the owner's rep. We, we were the general contractor on the Lake County Utility Department. These are kind of like a couple of the bigger projects in here. Our approach with, with the county and/or any building department, typically, if we're, once we're engaged by an owner, we'll call the building department and/or the county, and we'll sit down with them, and we'll ask them questions about how they wanna see the process happen. What, what they wanna see, at what dates, do they want us to send them some of their preliminary drawings to look at or not, et cetera, et cetera. Once we go through that process and we have a building permit secured, then we wanna find out from them, the type of inspections, the frequency, what they wanna be called on to come see, what they don't, what they expect us to do, you know, on their behalf in the field, et cetera, et cetera. We'll establish a rapport with them, and we'll establish guidelines as to what they do and don't want us to do, and how they want us to do it. And that, a lot of times, eliminates a lot of issues, a lot of problems, saves time as well, because we know what to expect from them. So, why RFC? Because we're nice guys, right? We have the experience for, I think, I think, you know, you, from the few projects that we, we showed you, we've done this before, we've been doing owner's reps since 2008. You know, that's how long we've been, we've been doing owner's rep. We have a team approach to everything. Problems are gonna happen, things are gonna come up. Our approach to these things is always be straightforward with you, always bring it up when it happens, let you know, we don't like to keep you in the dark, we want you to know what we're dealing with. Come up, like I said before, come up to, here's the problem, here's the options, tell us what, tell us what you wanna do. Or, you know, going through the master assessment plan, once you tell us, here's our priorities, figure out for us, what can we afford, what can't we afford for all these priorities, right? So, it's for us to go through, make our list, come back and give you options, give you our, our recommendations, and, and have the discussion, answer your questions. It's, it's a collaborative process, you know, nobody's gonna make a decision in, in a vacuum. That, that doesn't happen that way. We have a lot of experience with, with schools, as an owner's rep, as a contractor, as a construction manager. We've built a lot of schools over, over the years, and we have a, a great experience as a, as an owner's rep. So, you know, we, we'd love to work with you on, on this project. I think you asked me on Monday about availability and, and how often do we come to this job site and, and how much involved I will be with the project. I'm not here tonight just to sell you, and when we get the job, I'm disappearing. That's not how we operate. Ryan and I will be involved with this project every step of the way. Our size of company is, we're a medium-sized company, as I said at the beginning. We don't bid everything under the sun. Truthfully, if we take this job, if you, you know, you give us this job, we'd love to take it, we'll have to have it. If we're, you know, lucky to be awarded this project, we will probably be looking for one more project for 2024, and that'll be it for us. We will not be pursuing any other work. We would have, you know, reached our, our capacity for the year. And that's, that's the commitment that we will give you, you know? It's not, I'm not gonna pass this on to somebody, another person in the office to, to handle it. It's gonna be us. This, you know, this is, this is gonna be your team that you're gonna, you're gonna see. I'm gonna be coming to your board meetings, presenting, answering your questions, giving you our, our recommendations, giving you our, our reports, and then, giving you the options that, to pick from and have the dialogue. And that's throughout the entire project. That's not just now, or just for a presentation. It's every day throughout, throughout the project.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about, obviously, we're tying this project, I mean, you could look at it as self-contained, but it's connected to the high school where we want to tackle possibly, while we have access, some of the Byalovsky recommendations. And so, you know, looking at the timeline, obviously, we can't interrupt students much. So, there would be a plan to try to maximize time in the summer where it's gonna be invasive versus, you know, where you could be working and not interfere with students.
So, so basically, this, this becomes the phasing and the scheduling of the project. And this is why, you know, we, we like to, we like to have those put together. We like, we like to have those dates out there, and this is kind of why we threw out the, the quick schedule that, that we put there in, in front of you. But you're absolutely right. Once we understand a little bit more about what your priorities are, that's, these are one of the things that we're gonna look at. We're gonna look at, okay, when can we do this work without the interruptions? How can we do the work without the interruptions? I mean, we've done, we've done schoolwork, sometimes we're, we've planned it, we order all the material, we have everything ready. We've done, gone over Thanksgiving break, and we've worked for five, six days just to get a certain aspect of it done. We've done the same thing over Christmas break. It's all about the planning of it. It's all about understanding your, your, you know, what days, you know, the, the shutdowns that, that you have. And it's also understanding how you're gonna operate, how you operate those portions of the buildings. There might be some areas in the buildings that we could throw a temporary, you know, temporary wall and still work as the students are coming and going, you know?
Exactly.
Isolate ourselves, make it safe where we're not exposing anybody to any danger, but still getting some work. getting some work done.
We have a time check, you have about two minutes left.
Pardon me?
About two minutes left.
Okay. Well, what other questions you got?
Any other questions? Yeah, I, yeah, just wanted to ask, have you done a space similar to what our grant is about or?
Yes.
Have I even talked about that a little bit?
Yeah, we actually did, I mean, I don't know exactly the programming that you have, but we did, this was for a private school, it was St. Joe's in Strongsville. It was about 3,800 square feet, it's a little, you know, a little bit smaller, they had the computer lab, they had the technical part as well, you know, the construction technical part, it was kind of, you know, divided, so we've done that, we've worked with Polaris at their campus with some of their areas there. We didn't, what's that? The Manayana Career Center as well, we just did that two years ago, and then we have another project this summer with them as well, very similar to this type of work. We, I don't think Strongsville has anything like that, so, but I'll tell you, I mean, these are one of the things that we have been pushing, the state of Ohio, to help schools do more of that because we need it. I mean, this is, you know, I will tell you from a contractor perspective, for every 10 people in the trades that retire a day, we're only replacing them with seven. We have a 30% deficiency in our, in the construction trades. I'm sure you deal with it. So it's very important, I mean, what you're doing here is something that needs to be done in a bigger scale across the state because we need it, it's very well needed for students, the workforce, it's a great thing that you're doing.
That's because it's the Melissa Malacar educational wing.
She's the one that gets the credit. She gets the credit.
Oh, good. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Did we answer any other questions? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
I'm right around the corner from the fire station.
Okay.
Yeah, I got to tour.
Good.
Oh, no, I just...
Have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Thanksgiving, and near Thanksgiving, and I just brought something for the guys to eat. Oh, yeah. Just bring them to the guys, I got to see their decorations. I couldn't go.
I didn't realize.
That's a nice necklace.
So we have about a half hour, I know we had it for business, but we can technically discuss.
Yeah, we're open, let's talk about it now.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, we can.
It's still a work session, right?
It was put in the notice.
So I did have one question just among the group before we get started, so he's basically saying what you were saying before he started, that the design build may not be the way to go, is it because hiring an architect and working with them would be better to try to assimilate this with some of the other work we want to do, is that what you're saying?
I do think that's kind of what I took from a lot of, that is, the design build, the specs we would give to the design build company would specifically be to just the new additions.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't necessarily be with the architect in terms of tying in, or what we specifically wanted to address, but wouldn't be in tying in with some of the other systems because we'd probably write those as alternates in a build-type project, so it would look a little bit different. I think that's where the change would look in terms of specifically incorporating the list in Bielski and getting those specs out in a time that fits the timeline.
I think you said in the design build though too, they take the, they take your criteria and they design what they feel.
Yeah.
So you have like no control really over what it looks like?
You can put some non-negotiable, you have limited control.
Right, I mean, like you have limited control over that.
Yeah.
Right, and also to that point, he said what happens is, once they design it, you're kind of stuck. And so once you're...
Because you can't go back.
You can't go back, and you're going into another building, you don't know what's there, it causes problems sometimes.
Which takes more time.
And initially, Jen and our committee, our strategic planning committee, said, you know, that it would shortcut the time and expense if we just did design build, so that's why I'm asking.
Correct, yeah, I think it was to that, but I think part of the, when we spoke with the three firms, they both kind of, all of them spoke to the pluses and minuses to both, but they kind of leaned for what we were talking, kind of about the expansion of maybe using some other dollars, they were leaning more towards a CMR, the construction manager at risk.
A design firm instead of a design build.
Picking an architect and really getting an architect.
Yeah, from what I got out of it, it was more, you know, it could save us time if we give up control.
Yeah, I get it.
Right?
That's why the time is saved. And to me, it's almost like, okay, it's some little entity and you're just going to stick it on, but, you know, and there's some connection considerations, but then when we want to take it to the next level, that there might be some other projects we can tie in.
If we were doing a freestanding building, probably design build.
And that's short of a time.
Yeah.
Hey, I get it, right.
So just to kind of start the ranking discussion, just to kind of bring us back and maybe think about, I don't know, does everybody want to throw out like their number one, if one company stands out to you? Scott, I don't know if anybody stands out to you?
Well, I, we had, you know, the meeting before and so we kind of...
We weren't privy to that, so we'll share with us.
I don't want to preemptively do that, I would like them to...
Maybe we should.
There you go. That's a better option, right? Because we already have opinions, it's been stated, so the new people should have opinions.
Go ahead.
I mean, if we were ranking one, two, and three, for me, one would be RFC, two would be project management, three would be...
Ms. Chairwoman?
I was in the same boat.
And Denise?
Yeah, I mean, I think RFC seems to meet our needs, I mean, not to say that this company is like massive and has a lot of resources, and the first company, I mean, I took some notes, you know, if it wasn't for RFC being here, you know, I'd probably feel comfortable with them, but then they offer a lot too. But I think they're used to dealing with bigger budgets and we have some limitations too.
So you're saying RFC, PMC, and Cleora also?
And so...
Probably.
Belinda?
There you go. I think you guys have reiterated what we...
Oh, okay.
Oh, we had this discussion.
Oh, my gosh! Woo! We're done, it's pretty unanimous. Go back in! I know. The sides are parted in the world.
Right, we came away from the meeting with the same ideas, RFC, PMC, and Cleora.
PMC was predominantly architects, whereas RFC are contractors.
Yeah.
And that was a big difference that kind of really came out more today than came out even on Monday when we did it at the first time. And I think for this type of project, that contracting knowledge may be more...
Well, it came out on Monday, you were texting it at that time.
Was that kind of...
Well, and not to mention, you know, like trying to wrap all that in with all the things that we have gone on and the data that we have in Bielski and whatever, I think they'll be able to help us navigate that. Yeah, so that was our...
And they've worked with, I mean, they're working with Bielski, so, you know, on some things, so...
So it was unanimous.
Yeah. So how does Rich have when we come to the buildings and grounds, I'm looking for the...
I mean, you...
When we get into the...
Well, yeah, what does Rich think?
Before that, we needed to put them in.
Or anybody else? Well, give us seriously, what were your thoughts? Lauren?
It hands down, it's RFC for me. From the standpoint that he's upfront with what they'll do, how they'll do it, when they'll do it, there, he's upfront as how much he'll take on, but also I like the fact that he has the construction background, he also has the owner's rep background, and he also has a familiarity with the county. And when he met with us at the buildings and grounds, he emphasized that, you know, he would make that rapport. And what we've seen with just the modular unit at Buckeye with some of the delays and issues that we had with trying to get permits signed off, that is a key role for our school. Plus, I also feel that he comes across as a very strong individual that I feel confidently that he would hold to his word and he would go to bat for us. I think that's the type of company and individual that this district needs moving forward.
Awesome. And I also, you know, we've received, and not once but twice, I've talked to Andy Rose over at Concord, and that was a pretty big project, and he highly spoke of them, recommended them, and they came in under budget and I think they only had one change order, which was minimal.
Thank you, Rich.
So it's good to know that.
So when we come to that part, Mr. Fischel should put them in order, or?
Yeah, we can do that.
Is that...
Like I said, well, pretty much, I can write them in, someone just needs to make a motion and that's going to be what our suggestion or what our vote is and then it's there. So that'll be, that'll be outside of the normal buildings and grounds.
Right, it's separate.
It's a separate agenda.
Yeah, so it's...
Right?
It's like the last... Oh, okay. Right?
Take a high eight to seven.
Melissa, I always care what you think.
Yeah, right?
Take a high eight to seven.
Stop to my time now. Love it. Good. You're happy, right?